Okay, we will now continue our Board of Ed meeting. We had called to order and went into executive session earlier tonight, and now we're going to take a roll call.
Surely.
Mr. Mahmood.
Thank you. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte? Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Mr. Gillette? Mrs. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Here.
Dr. Swasan?
Here.
Mr. Hio?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
We have a quorum.
Great. I ask that you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have four sets of minutes to approve. I'll start with a motion and second for the minutes of the executive session on May 14th, please.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Motion passes.
Thank you. Motion to approve regular meeting minutes of May 14th.
No motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Motion passes.
Okay. Okay. Motion to approve executive session minutes of May 21st. Motion and second, please.
No motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Questions? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstained.
Okay.
Motion passes.
And finally, for the regular minutes of May 21st. Motion?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Thank you. Questions? Comments?
Sorry, was that the one that we had the meeting and then stayed after?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Okay. Here we go. This for the regular meeting. Okay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstained.
Okay.
Got it. Motion passes.
Okay. I'll recognize the correspondence that was received, and we can move on to the Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm pleased to share some wonderful news from around the district with our board and community members this evening. Next week, the Hillsborough High School class of 2018 will be surrounded by families, friends, teachers, and administrators as they graduate on to the next stages of their lives. During the past few weeks, this amazing class has celebrated their successes at dinners and activities held in their honor. The annual Senior Athletic Dinner was held on June 5th at the Imperia in Somerset for about 430 guests, including senior athletes, parents, coaches, and invited guests. One hundred and sixty-two of those in attendance were senior athletes from the 29 sports offered at Hillsborough High School. Thirty-four scholarships were given out that evening by various booster clubs and memorial funds. Owen Zabo, a member of the cross-country and track teams, Nimish Mishra of the tennis team, Ashley Yang from the swim team, and Catherine Nayan, also of the swim team, were named the 2017-2018 Scholar Athletes. Jackson Parham of the football and basketball teams, and Olivia Buckman from the basketball and lacrosse teams, were named the Senior Athletes of the Year by their head coaches. Congratulations to all of our senior athletes. We wish you only the very best as you leave Hillsborough High School and continue on to your next steps. The Class of 2018 celebrations continued on June 7th at the Senior Award Night. That evening, $192,000 in awards and scholarships were handed out by local community members, and groups, and teachers, and staff members, local families, booster clubs, and so many other caring and generous organizations. This was an amazing evening for those in attendance to celebrate our seniors, as well as to see our community's support for the graduating class. One of the most generous scholarships that was handed out that evening was to senior Erin Buckman, who will be presented with a $100,000 ROTC scholarship by Captain Joseph Grillo. During the evening ceremonies this year, the valedictorian and salutatorian were announced. I am pleased to share with you that Iris Liu was announced as this year's valedictorian, and Ashley Yang was announced as the salutatorian. Both students were presented with $500 awards, plaque, a medal, and will have the honor of making a speech at the 2018 graduation ceremony. Congratulations to Erin, Iris, and Ashley, and the nearly 100 other members of the class of 2018 that were honored on June 7th. Thank you also goes out to Ms. Jessica Smedley, our Director of Guidance, and the entire Guidance Department, including Mrs. Maureen Yuskovich, for planning such a wonderful evening to honor our seniors who have worked so hard for the last 13 years. Thank you also to all of the members of our community and organizations for supporting our students with these awards. I am also pleased to share that Hillsborough student Andrew Vanderwall, a senior in the Electrical Construction Program at Somerset County Vo-Tech School, received a $2,500 fine home building at Keep Craft Alive and Skills USA Scholarship Award. As part of the application process for the scholarship, Andrew submitted an essay and provided a recommendation letter and photo of his work. Next year, Andrew is set to enter into the Power System Institute Program offered by JCPN in partnership with RVCC. After completing the two-year PSI program, Andrew will earn an Associate's of Applied Science degree in electric utility technology from RVCC. On June 1st, the Amsterdam Elementary School community gathered to celebrate as 19 students, two teachers, and two former students, and one parent donated their hair to Wigs for Kids, a nonprofit organization that makes hairpieces for children who suffer from hair loss. This is the 15th year that Amsterdam School has held this hair-cutting celebration. In addition to providing about 276 inches of hair to this nonprofit organization, this year, the school community also raised a whopping $1,100 in monetary donations. A thank you to all of the teachers, staff members, Principal Dr. Mulady, the homeschool association, and all of the students for such a wonderful display of generosity, and a special thank you to Lisa Caudill and the entire Character Education Committee at Amsterdam School for such a wonderful morning. Recently, at the Brooks Arts Center, the 2018 winners of the Somerset County's Historic Preservation and History Awards were announced. These awards were created to encourage the preservation of the county's historical resources and its history. I am pleased to share with the Board of Education that member Greg Gillette was honored with the History Leadership Education Award for his in-depth blogs, Gillette on Hillsborough and The View from Hillsborough. These highly informative online resources have been active for over 10 years and contain hundreds of well-researched articles on the historic topics centered on Hillsborough. Congratulations on this honor, Greg. I wish you a spiritual. Well over 1,000 runners participated in the annual YMCA Hillsborough Hop 5K on June 2nd. A great number of those runners were Hillsborough School students and staff, including members and advisors of the Hillsborough Eye Run and the Blur Clubs from each of our schools. Congratulations to another Gillette, sophomore William Gillette, who was the first-place finisher on the hop with a time of 18:39. William is the youngest first-place finisher in the 17-year history of this road race. It is always wonderful to have so many Hillsborough students, staff, and even Board of Education members participate with their families. Congratulations to William and all of the Hillsborough runners on this fun and healthy And now what we've all been waiting for. Tonight, we will continue a longstanding tradition in Hillsborough of recognizing the work and dedication of our district's retirees. This year, if you were to gather up all of the years of experience these 23 folks have shared with the children of our community, it would be over 491 years. That's remarkable. Thank you to all of our retirees for this amazing gift. I'm now going to hand it over to Ms. Finger, the Principal of Hillsborough High School, to start the introductions of these amazing Hillsborough staff. Congratulations to all of our retirees.
Good evening, everyone. It's truly my pleasure tonight to introduce several of our retirees. We actually have between people who left at the very, very end of last year after the school year ended and the end of this year, 12 retirees from Hillsborough High School, several of which are with us this evening. First up, I would like to ask Mrs. Diane Bavir to please join me at the podium. Diane Bavir is retiring from Hillsborough High School where she works as an English teacher. She has been at HHS for 17 of the 17 years she has worked in the district. Overall, she has been in education for 30 years. Each year, I ask our retirees to share some of their thoughts with me, including highlights of their careers, favorite memories, meaningful quotes, or words of wisdom. Mrs. Bavir shared the following highlights. She said, "Working with seniors, there are always those students who struggle, and typically, I have one student each year who seems to have given up before the year even starts. I make it my mission to motivate those students to perform to the best of their ability. My husband calls them my projects. I love working with these students and showing them they are capable and bright. Each student requires a different approach, and I am proud to say each has succeeded." Regarding treasured memories, Mrs. Bavir stated, "There are too many to choose just one, and truthfully, if you ask me, that is exactly how a good career is supposed to come to an end." When it comes to a favorite or meaningful quote or words of wisdom, Mrs. Bavir offered a Kurt Vonnegut quote that I'm going to paraphrase.
Very good.
Good idea. It says, "Hello, babies. Welcome to Earth. It's hot in the summer and cold in the winter. It's round and wet and crowded. On the outside, babies, you've got 100 years here. There's only one rule I know of, babies, gosh darn it," that's the paraphrase, "you've got to be kind." She also points out that life is an adventure, and it's all in how you meet it. So Mrs. Bavir has played a huge role in Hillsborough High School and will forever be a part of the memories of our students. An English teacher by day, she was the yearbook advisor for many years, directly responsible for overseeing a team of students who created the theme, coordinated all of the pictures, and did all of the layout for the book that will forever summarize the high school experiences of our Raiders. Years from now, it will also become the go-to resource for our alumni when they study up in preparation for their 20th and 30th reunions. If that's not a lasting impact, I don't know what is. Joanne Brush is our next retiree. Joanne Brush is retiring from Hillsborough High School where she works as a mathematics teacher. She has been at HHS for 17 of her 17 years in the district. Overall, she's been in education for 36 years. Mrs. Brush shared with me the following highlights. She said, "The highlight of my career at Hillsborough High School is watching the students get excited about math. Also, staying with the same homeroom for four years and watching these children grow into adults. I have a senior homeroom this year, and they are all so excited about what is next to come in their lives." Truthfully, I would imagine Mrs. Brush is just as excited herself. Regarding treasured memories, she stated, "I will truly miss my colleagues at Hillsborough High School. My most treasured memory at HHS is having so many students tell me to stay and not retire." She was so touched by that. When it comes to a favorite or meaningful quote or words of wisdom, Mrs. Brush offered, "You will face many defeats in life, but never let yourself be defeated by Maya Angelou." Certainly words to live by. So being named this year's Teacher of the Year at Hillsborough High School was really the perfect end to a wonderful career. Mrs. Brush is one of those teachers who does what she does just because they are the right things to do for her students. She is a great teacher and a great co-teacher. The latter is far from easy to be. She gives her students her all through extra help, tutoring, and home instruction. She attends and chaperones many school activities, and she is the sophomore class co-advisor. She is positive at all times, and her students are the luckier for it. As I said recently in her Teacher of the Year comments, she has inspired a former student to become a teacher, and a current coworker to become a student, actually auditing her geometry class, to brush up in skills in preparation for teaching responsibilities next year. That, right there, really says something about Mrs. Brush's willingness to go above and beyond, and the degree to which she is respected by our staff. Mostly, we will miss her laughter and her positivity. Up next, I am pleased to introduce Mary Dumberley. Mary Dumberley is retiring from HHS where she works as a teacher of self-contained moderate class in our Special Education Department, and where she serves as a mentor for the PALS program. She's been at HHS for 26 years, and overall, in education for 34 years. Mrs. Dumberley shared the following highlight, basically saying, "Having the opportunity to work with students from age 14 through 21, sharing their growth and experiences, has stood out for her as something truly special." Regarding treasured memories, she stated, "I appreciate observing the students who have become employed at various Hillsborough businesses as a result of their experiences through the HHS Work Readiness Program and the Community Work Program." When it comes to a favorite or meaningful quote or words of wisdom, Mrs. Dumberley offered, "All people need a little help, a little hope, and someone who believes in them," by Magic Johnson. I think that's kind of the underlying definition of what it is to be a teacher of students in the Special Needs Department. Mrs. Dumberley has had the opportunity during her career to work with some of our absolute best students, our self-contained special education population. Daily, she is surrounded by students who work hard at everything they do, never give up, and spend a lot of time in high school, learning to navigate the logistical and social challenges of the world. Mrs. Dumberley is firm but kind, and her students adore her, as do the other staff members who have been fortunate to work with her over the years. Her heart is always in the right place, and our special education program has thrived while she has been here. Mrs. Dumberley has enjoyed what I think is one of the best jobs in the world, except perhaps the one she is taking next. She will be working with adults with special needs, taking them on field trips and other excursions such as to go shopping, to a restaurant, and so on, but without having to do all of the paperwork that goes with doing the same exact things with high school students. In short, she just gets to enjoy the time with her clients while continuing to teach them critical life skills. Once a teacher, always a teacher. That is our Mrs. Dumberley. I'd now like to invite up Bridgette Gleason. Bridgette Gleason is retiring from HHS where she works as an instructional assistant and job coach. She has been at the high school for nine of the 19 years she has worked in the district, and overall, she's been in education for a total of 19 years. Mrs. Gleason shared her highlights. "The highlight of my career at HHS has been acting as a job coach for special education students in the school's Community Work Program. Guiding our students toward mastering work skills that give them a sense of pride and accomplishment has been priceless." Regarding treasured memories, she stated, "I can't narrow it down to a single treasured memory, but I do and will always treasure the wonderful friendships I've been fortunate to make during my years at HHS." When it comes to a favorite or meaningful quote or words of wisdom, Mrs. Gleason offered her own words. Kindness, empathy, patience, and a sense of humor are the keys to happiness for all of us. In her role as an instructional assistant and job coach, Mrs. Gleason has been able to work with our self-contained special education students, which has put her in the presence of a great deal of love, positivity, and joyful laughter over the years. Whether working with students in school or on the road, she has been that critical added element that has helped some of our students better learn the ways that they will become adult workers in our community, and in some cases, workers in our own district. She is professional and devoted to her students and their needs. It will be hard to imagine Hillsborough High School without Mrs. Gleason. Although only in our building for nine years, she has had such an imprint on many students' and coworkers' lives that she will be sorely missed. Congratulations, and thank you for everything. Only 43 to go. Hang on. Diane Hammond is retiring from Hillsborough High School where she works as a special educator. She has been at HHS for the 18 years she's worked in the district and has been in education for 35 years. Mrs. Hammond shared the following highlight. "I have seen so many successes of my students, small and large, which have made me extremely proud and happy that I was a part of their achievements." Regarding treasured memories, she stated, "My most cherished memories of my career at HHS are, number one, seeing my two daughters receive their HHS diplomas; number two, making and building friendships with some very special people; and number three, co-teaching with a wonderful, special person, another retiree, Mrs. Joanne Brush. We had a lot of laughs and good times in our tenure together." When it comes to a favorite or meaningful quote or words of wisdom, Mrs. Hammond offered the words of Maya Angelou. "My mission in life is not merely to survive, but to thrive, and to do so with some passion, some compassion, some humor, and some style." Those of us who know her agree she's accomplished that. Mrs. Hammond is, simply put, a piece of work. She is hardworking, and one of the most successful co-teaching partnerships in the history of HHS, and both she and Mrs. Brush are retiring this year, much to my dismay. She is honest, forthcoming, sincere, and dedicated to her students inside and outside the classroom. As a class advisor, she helps to wrangle the freshmen and help them figure out high school, and perhaps most importantly, to the students' spirit night. She is funny and friendly, and she helps her students feel at home in the classroom. Mrs. Hammond will be missed next year on many levels, but she has wished the best for a wonderful future full of many, many new adventures. Up next is Ginny Pirati. Virginia, also known as Ginny Pirati, is retiring from HHS where she works on our child study team as an LDTC. She has been at HHS for 12 of her 15 years in the district, and overall, has been in education for 20 years. Mrs. Pirati shared the following highlights. "The knowledge that I have gained over these years has broadened my ability to advocate for young people with unique challenges. I have learned more from my students than I ever imagined I could." Regarding treasured memories, she stated, "I will treasure the memories of my students and the supportive families that I have worked with, the impact I have made on their lives, and the friendships I have made with my fellow staff members." When it comes to a favorite or meaningful quote or words of wisdom, Mrs. Pirati offered, "Anyone who does anything to help a child in his or her life is a hero to me," from Fred Rogers. Mrs. Pirati traveled a unique path to her current role at HHS. Starting as a special education teacher at Hillsborough High School, she became a learning disabilities teacher consultant at HMS and at the elementary level, and then came back to HHS again as an LDTC, where she is finishing her career. Part of her role is to advocate for her students, which she always did quite avidly, to ensure that all aspects of a student's individual situation were known as decisions were being made. She always stood up for what she thought was right and fair, and the students were the better for her efforts. Thank you for all you've done for our students, Mrs. Pirati, and enjoy every moment of your And Mr. Fred Salz. Fred Salz is retiring from Hillsborough High School where he works as a math teacher. At some point, advisor of the Photography Club, theater, set builder, freelance school activity, photographer with numerous submissions to the yearbook, he has been at Hillsborough High School for all of the 15 years that he has worked in the district, and all of the 15 years in which he has been in education. Mr. Salz shared the following highlights. "I think the highlight of my career was when I was the set builder for the musical and fall comedy theater performances. These activities gave me an opportunity to contribute my mechanical and construction skills, and in many cases, my math skills, to the construction of some elaborate sets. Of particular fondness was the construction of the West Side Story set, which involved building an extended and sloped stage for the musical. I also was the theater photographer during this time, providing headshots and other photo needs to the group." Those of you who remember West Side Story know that it was incredible. Remembering treasured memories, he stated, "The most treasured memories are when students express their thanks for making the study of mathematics interesting and stimulating. Some will thank me upon graduation, going into career of teaching math, and in other cases, a letter comes in years later expressing their appreciation for how my classes directly or indirectly influenced their career decisions." When it comes to a favorite or meaningful quote or words of wisdom, Mr. Salz offered, "I enjoyed sharing with students how some of the bizarre things we learned in math could actually be used in our hobbies, household transactions, politics, and so on." His quote sums that up perfectly when he says, "It's not just about finding X." Mr. Salz is known for a lot of things at Hillsborough High School. He has the best collection of colorful patterned shirts ever, and he teaches some really high-level courses. Calculus CP and Math Analysis honors provide opportunities for students to extend their studies and prepare them for the rigorous math work they will do in college. Mr. Salz gives his students a workout to make sure that they are ready and raring to go. An avid photographer, over the years, he helped chronicle many school activities as well, and the West Side Story set mentioned earlier was a stunner. Among his best qualities are his big heart and kind soul. Mr. Salz will be missed next year and has wished the absolute best for a wonderful retirement with his family. And unfortunately, unable to attend tonight were two other retirees from Hillsborough High School who I just want to mention. Dr. Craig Hoppy is a science teacher, but he is with his students tonight as they present their Walkman projects at Rutgers University, and my administrative assistant, Teresa Legreca, who's been with me for 18 years and will be sorely missed. And now, to Dr. Trabowski to cover HMS. Congratulations to everyone.
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure, I have four staff members I'd like to acknowledge tonight for retirement. One is not here this evening, so let me just begin with Debbie Fingerhut. Debbie's retiring after 16 years of service as an instructional assistant with students in several of our schools. She began at Woods Road Elementary, served at Hillsborough Elementary, and then at Hillsborough Middle School, and was a wonderful asset to so many children in so many classrooms. And her dedicated care now can be extended to her grandson, which probably is this evening with her grandson, and some well-deserved travel with her family. So I just want to acknowledge Debbie Fingerhut on her work for Hillsborough Schools. Next, I'd like to introduce Maria Yaya. Maria, if you'll make your way up here with some assistance. Maria is recovering from some foot surgery. Maria Yaya. Maria Yaya is retiring after sixteen years in Hillsborough Schools, the last fifteen at Hillsborough Middle School. She began here at Autton Road Intermediate. People are often amazed at how many world languages we teach in Hillsborough, and when I mention Italian and how vibrant the Italian program is as our second most popular language, they often are amazed by that too. And I think that has a lot to do with the work of Maria Yaya and how much she loves the language and loves her students as well. She often spices up her classroom with hands-on lessons and pasta making, and of course, leading students on annual excursions to historic Little Italy in New York. They would have gone to Ellis Island had not some surgery interfered in those plans, but such is life. In retirement, Maria plans to continue her travels to Italy, offering special guided tours to her favorite principal, I know, and other friends and family. Maria, thank you for all of your wonderful service to Hillsborough Schools and congratulations on your retirement. To do that right, I really should add a glass of wine and soda to toast as well. Next, I'd like to introduce Bonnie Sobel. Bonnie? Bonnie Sobel is retiring after thirty-two years teaching music at Hillsborough Middle School. Over the years, Bonnie has been a guiding force in the music department at the school, leading in the design of curriculum, providing adaptive music education for students with some of our more significant learning disabilities, and supporting new teachers and programs in all areas of the performing arts at our school. Her gifted sense of humor, which I'll spare use them that this evening, her gifted sense of humor and dedication to the children and the staff at HMS are now attributed in the annals of our school history. She and her husband will soon be leaving Hillsborough though to their new home in Florida near family and friends who are already there. Bonnie, thank you for all the laughter and the love of music you shared with students and staff at HMS, and all the very best to you in the years ahead. Lastly, also cannot be here this evening, but I would be remiss if I didn't pause and recognize Bob Gill, who is retiring after thirty-eight years teaching science at the middle school. Bob has been the heart and soul of HMS for many years. In 2012, Bob Gill was rightly recognized as our HMS Teacher of the Year, not only for the creativity and joy he brought to his science classroom, but for his dedication and commitment to raising generations of young people with love and good character. As the advisor to our eighth grade class for more than two decades, he carefully orchestrated every detail of our annual overnight class trip to Gettysburg in Hershey, PA, which we just returned from again for his last time. That has become legendary celebration and a wonderful rite of passage for the youth of Hillsborough. Bob now joins his wife Suzanne, also a former HMS teacher, in retirement so they can put their new camper to good use traveling throughout the USA any time of year they wish. Bob Gill, I wish you all the very, very best, and thank you very, very much for all of your service as well. And now it's my pleasure to welcome up Steve Carrigan, principal of Woodford Elementary. Steve?
Good evening, everyone. It is my honor to present two people who are irreplaceable. Eileen Damatos, please come on up. Eileen is retiring from Hillsborough after twenty-five years of teaching transitional primary... Yes, exactly, that is the response. Twenty-four of those years at Woodford. In 2007, she received the honor of being our Woodford Teacher of the Year. She plans on remaining as a Hillsborough resident, which is very good because we're going to need substitute teachers. (LAUGHTER) And she's looking forward to spending time with her husband Joe, her two sons Michael and Danny, and her grandson Thomas. And in trying to come up with something that will encapsulate all that you have done, and as a staff, we had a little get-together last week, and there was a lot of laughter and some tears, and I don't want to bring all that up again, but the thing that stands out most is Mrs. Damatos regularly has former students who are in their mid-twenty's now coming back to visit her on a very consistent basis. And the thought that truly, Eileen, you're a teacher and you touched these children's lives and how much you've paid it forward that they can carry on all the things that you've done for them is truly without measure, and I can't thank you enough for all that you've done for Hillsborough and for Woodford. Congratulations on your retirement. Mrs. Colleen Kinsalvo, please come on up. Mrs. Kinsalvo, again, irreplaceable, has been an elementary school teacher for thirty-five years, and twenty-eight of those years have been in Hillsborough, and again, all of them have been at Woodford, so this is very bittersweet for Woodford. Overall, Mrs. Kinsalvo has taught grades two, three, four, and five, BSI, ASI, she's been a teacher of writing, and at Woodford, she's taught grades three and four as well as BSI, ASI, and has been a teacher of writing. Mrs. Kinsalvo was our 2006 Woodford Teacher of the Year, and when I asked for, you know, a funny, interesting story... I might get through this. The story that she shared was that early on in her career, she used to like to wear pumps that matched her skirt, and on a particular day, she was also wearing a scarf which was coordinated with the pumps and the skirt. And while she was laminating something, (LAUGHTER) the scarf got caught in the laminator, and of course, it being late in the day and her being very dedicated, there weren't a lot of people around, I guess in a moment of panic you forgot to hit the off button. Thankfully, Mr. Jim Cox, our custodian, was there, heard the ruckus, and came rushing into the workroom and turned the laminator off, and I guess you don't remember what had happened to the scarf. But what I find interesting about that being the story that Colleen wanted to share, it speaks to how selfless and how unassuming and how humble that she is. There are so many stories that I could share with you about how Mrs. Kinsalvo has touched the lives of students, how Mrs. Kinsalvo has made teachers better teachers by being our teacher of writing and expanding their skill sets. You have given so much to the students, the parents, and the staff of Woodford. I can't thank you enough. Congratulations on everything. It is now my honor to call up Mrs. Lisa Heisel, principal of Triangle School.
I'm going to introduce you to Nancy Newtonson. I never do a script, but this was a story that I felt that I wanted to share. Our Triangle School Sunshine Committee planned an amazing retirement party for Nancy, complete with a story that they wrote, which was read by many of our staff, and I've paraphrased some of it for you. Edgar Degas once said, "Art is not what you see, but what you make others see." There will never be enough words to express how much Nancy has made us see in ourselves, our school, and in our students. Her light, love, and laughter have filled the halls of Triangle School for the last thirty-one years. No one will ever fill her shoes, but rather than sit and miss her, we hope to honor her by continuing to see all of the things she has shown us over the years. Nancy has made us see that we should live today and every day in all caps. This little quote is at the bottom of every enthusiastic email that she sends, and we know that Nancy truly believes this. You never see her looking upset or down. For the last thirty-one years at Triangle School, she has been seen living in caps, day in and day out, and she inspires us to do the same. Nancy has made us see that family comes first. The love that Nancy has for her family has inspired us all. She gushes whenever she speaks about them and absolutely beams when they visited Triangle School, her home away from home. She has made us see that a smile can make all the difference in the world. Her beaming smile would greet you from a mile away, lifting your spirits and adding some sunshine to your day. Nancy has opened our eyes to see that art can be celebrated and implemented throughout all the content areas. Each and every student has an incredibly loving and close relationship with Mrs. Newton because of her passion and spirit. She has patience and compassion and is incredibly understanding. Nancy has made us see that Pac-Man is more than just an eighties video game. At Triangle School, it is a way of life. She has helped turn Pac-Man into a triangle legend. Her countless hours of building, constructing, and designing the set never goes unnoticed. Nancy has made us see that within each child is something spectacular. From kindergarten to fourth grade, artistic geniuses to artistic strugglers, Nancy has always found a way to complement each child's work. There was always something wonderful, creative, or inspiring about the art her students made, and Nancy made sure that everyone knew it. Art is not what you see, but what you make others see. Nancy has made us see that Triangle School is a special place, a place to call home. Nancy has welcomed each of us into her family, and we know for sure she will always be a part of ours. Triangle School will never be the same without you, and we wish you all the happiness you deserve in this new chapter of your life. I'm going to introduce you to Dr. Jenkins from Sunnymead School.
Congratulations to all of our retirees, and it is my distinct pleasure and honor to present to you two of our Sunnymead family members who will be transitioning to the next chapters of their lives. So I'm going to ask Mrs. Kathy Pishoda to come forward. Kathy began her teaching career here in Hillsborough in 1991 as an instructional assistant at Woods Road Elementary School in the preschool autism class. Two years later, she transitioned into a full-time special ed kindergarten teaching position. In 1998, Kathy transferred to the very wonderful Sunnymead School as a resource room teacher, which she's enjoyed doing for the past twenty years. After retirement, she plans on traveling and spending time with her family. When I asked Kathy what she liked most about teaching, she said, "I love the children most. I feel like my students were a gift that I gave to myself over the past years. They are what got me up in the morning, every morning. They gave me joy, happiness, and laughter. They are sincere and honest, and they make me smile." When I asked, "What will you miss the most?", Kathy said, "I'll miss all my friends and colleagues at Sunnymead School." They welcomed me aboard twenty years ago, and I feel a real family connection to all of them. Kathy's favorite quote is, "The most beautiful things in life are not things. They're people, and places, and memories, and pictures. They're feelings, and moments, and smiles, and laughter." Well, Kathy, we want to thank you for the many moments of laughter, smiles, heartfelt feelings that you've shared with the many students and all of the staff of Sunnymead School. And although you're retiring, we know that your love for children will never retire. We love you and we wish you the very, very best. Next, I'd like to invite Ann Cucciara to the podium. Hi, Ann. Ann's been on quite a journey. Ann began her teaching career in 1981 at a Catholic school in Gettysburg, Pennsylvania. Along her journey, she's taught in Washington DC, Booton, New Jersey, and in 1986, she began teaching in Hillsborough. She taught fourth grade for two years at Woods Road and transferred to Sunnymead in 1989 as a teacher of writing, one of her passions. In 1999, Ann left teaching to raise her family, and in 1997, she returned to teaching and Sunnymead and has been there ever since. While Ann has taught a variety of grade levels in both the gen ed and special ed setting, she has spent her last year at Sunnymead as a resource room teacher, where she's continued to make magic. A few weeks ago, Ann was asked by a colleague to share her journey in education, and in her bio, she wrote, "It's been one roller coaster of a career, but I would not change one thing." In retirement, Ann plans to pursue her interest in music and to travel. She actually has a trip planned to Italy in September. That's pretty interesting, right? September she'd pick? Just making us a little bit jealous, I'm just saying. When asked what she loves most about teaching, she stated, "By far, I love the aha moments when the students grasp the concept, learned a new idea, or felt they accomplished something." When asked what she will miss, Ann stated, "I will miss the community that makes up Sunnymead, my coworkers..." Then she said, "You?" "...the students and the families. I will miss the daily business of making teaching memories." Ann's favorite quote is, "Be the change that you wish to be in the world." Ann, your quote became your brand. You not only talk the talk, but you walk the walk. You became the change that you wished to be in the world, and as a result, you've left your handprint on the minds and hearts of countless children, and because of you, their lives have forever been changed. On behalf of the entire Sunnymead family, thank you for your years of tireless dedication and service. We appreciate you, we love you, and we are going to miss you. Congratulations. And now it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Mary Ann Malady from Amsterdam Elementary School.
Good evening, everyone. This evening is a time to celebrate the two distinguished careers of two of the retirees from Amsterdam School. Our first retiree is Barbara Petone. Barbara, can you please come up? I cannot remember a time when Barbara Petone was not a part of the Amsterdam family. Of her twenty-six years in education, she spent twenty-three of them with us, lucky us. During that time, she has worn many hats and assumed many roles. She has made an impact on many a child and many an adult during her time in Hillsborough. I think her favorite quote by Oscar Wilde reflects the life she leads. "When it rains, look for rainbows; when it's dark, look for stars." She sees the good in just everyone and every situation. When she retires, which is well-deserved, she plans to have few plans, but to savor every moment with family, friends, and life as it comes. Barbara's legacy to us is her generosity of spirit, her sense of family, and her strong connection with all of her students. She has not only supported her students, but she has supported all of us through the years and made a lasting impact on her students and every life she has touched, and she has touched many a lives. Thank you, Barbara, for your years of dedication, and thank you for being a friend. Next, I'd like to introduce Cindy Peney. Cindy joined the Amsterdam's team in 2003 as a first grade teacher. She hasn't been in education for twenty-five years. She taught preschool for ten years. She taught preschool for 10 years, she taught 1st grade for 10 years, and the last five years have been in my very special place, kindergarten. Her favorite quote is, "In the end, it's not the years in your life that counts, it's the life in your years," by Abraham Lincoln. In retirement, she hopes to spend more time with family and friends. Travel is also on her agenda. So far, she planned a cruise scheduled in January with her husband and some friends to Puerto Rico, Virgin Islands, and St. Martin. She's hoping to do a lot more traveling. Lucky her, it's well deserved. Cindy's legacy is the manner in which she treats children. She treats every child with kindness, patience, and warmth. She is the safe place they need to nestle. She is the comfort, and she is their joy. She has touched many child's heart, and for this, we say, "Thank you." We wish you all well and good luck in your retirement, and we will miss you. And right now, it's my pleasure to introduce Lorraine Borick, Supervisor of Nurses.
We have three nurses retiring this year, and each principal said to me, "Do you want me to speak?" And for each nurse, and I said, "Oh, no, please, let me." And so, I would like to start with Lynn Beagle. Lynn, please come up. Lynn Beagle started working for the Hillsborough School District in 1998. In 2000, she accepted an assignment as a 1-to-1 nurse, and by 2002, was working full-time at Hillsborough High School. In addition to being a certified school nurse, Mrs. Beagle is a Johnson &amp; Johnson School Leadership Fellow and a family nurse practitioner. This year alone, Mrs. Beagle logged in 2,670 health office visits. She is a resident of Hillsborough, and her passion for supporting health and wellness extends beyond the walls of the health office. She has been an integral member of the school wellness team, working to support all staff and students in addressing physical and mental health issues. Her work with the Borough Safe, or her community work with the Township Green Fair, has influenced and impacted the community at large. She has used her time and talent to mentor other nurses and even worked with students on their independent study projects. Mrs. Beagle has lived her belief that health promotion and education, not only in the schools but in the community, is a priority for school nurses. She has provided people with the tools and knowledge they need to be their own health advocate and active participants in their own wellness has been a foundation of her nursing practice. Retirement from the district does not mean retirement for Lynn Beagle, but rather, it will provide the time for her to pursue her other passions: knitting, quilting, gardening, and camping. She plans to do a lot of traveling in her new casita with her beloved husband of 33 years, Ron. I have the privilege of working with Lynn since I started in Hillsborough, and I may have been her supervisor, but in many ways, she was my mentor. She has been my right hand, always urging me forward, and she has diligently worked this past year to wean me and make me be more independent. Although I will miss working with her every day, I will no longer be her supervisor. Now, I will just refer to her as an esteemed colleague and, best of all, friend. Lynn, live long and prosper. Next, could Annette Havison come up, please?
Annette has been with the Hillsborough School District for 18 years. She has worked at the elementary level, intermediate, and middle school level. You would think that when someone is getting ready to retire, they kick back and count down the days. Mrs. Havison has worked and continues to work as if there is no end in sight. Everyone is well versed in the fact that school nurses provide onsite care, coordination. However, you may not realize that an important role of the school nurse also involves program planning and management. Mrs. Havison has worked collaboratively to engage others to support the health and wellness of her students, and her work impacts the wider learning community. She has supported programs such as the Red Cross Pillowcase Project. She has worked on wellness initiatives in ARIS and the middle school that educate students on good nutrition, including the importance of drinking milk and eating fruits and vegetables. She worked to instill everyday health habits, such as getting the right amount of sleep, and strategies for taking care of emotional health. Mrs. Havison provides care coordination by ensuring that students with health issues will have their needs met during the school day by educating staff members on the child's health needs and ensuring appropriate accommodations for the classroom. Whether it is a student with diabetes, a concussion, or a cast, Mrs. Havison works with the family, the physician, and includes the student in developing an appropriate plan. In the words of C.S. Lewis, "You are never too old to set another goal or dream a new dream." Annette is living that quote. She will be moving to her new home in Myrtle Beach with her husband. She will pursue her love of singing and playing the piano, and I know she will find new ways to use her nursing skills and knowledge to benefit others. Annette, keep living your dream. And last but not least, Ruth Stanley, please come on down. It's interesting because Annette and Ruth and Lynn all started right around the same time, so it is interesting that they're leaving at the same time as well. Ruth has been a school nurse in the Hillsborough School District since January 2001. Her son was attending school in the district at the time when Val Newman, who was one of the nurses in the district, said, "Oh, I think you would make a wonderful school nurse. You should start subbing and then get your certification." Well, that's history. Mrs. Stanley joined the district, and she has worked in several capacities within the district. Most recently, she is the nurse at Wood Fern Elementary School, and last year, she had been named Educational Specialist of the Year. She is also a J&amp;J Fellow and has presented her work at the annual NACIN Conference, and I have worked closely with her on the Executive Board of the New Jersey State School Nurse Association, and I am honored to have her as a colleague. It would be an understatement to say that Mrs. Stanley touched the lives of thousands of students. This year alone, there were 4,497 visits to the nurse's office, and with each visit, Mrs. Stanley shows caring and concern and functions at a high level of autonomy. She ensures that the students that do not pass their vision screening in school see an eye doctor for an evaluation and treatment. She works to have the mobile dentist come to the school to provide cleanings and an exam. She makes sure students without health insurance are connected to care, and she has built a collaborative relationship with outside agencies to support the health and education of all students. She encourages students to engage in healthy habits, and she works with families and reassures them that their child with a medical condition such as asthma, diabetes, or food allergy will be safe and cared for in school. Her plan for retirement has been in the works for quite a while. Her husband Keith has repeatedly reminded me that she would be retiring. Perhaps it was so I would prepare myself for the time that I would have to say goodbye. Well, there's no denying it any longer. The house has a buyer, much of the furniture is sold, and the moving van is on its way, and Mrs. Stanley will be pulling away on June 22nd to her new happy place. It has been an honor to work side by side with Mrs. Stanley. She's an esteemed colleague, and the bonds we have formed at work have provided the framework for a lasting friendship. Mrs. Stanley is off to pursue many exciting adventures, and I wish her good health surrounded by family and friends.
Thank you very much, Ms. Borick. As we celebrate our retirees, let's just take a moment and recognize our administrators for their kind and heartfelt words, please. And I know I speak on behalf of the board when we want to say thank you for the service that you have provided for over 490 years, oh my goodness, to the children of Hillsborough Township. And to honor you, we have just some treats and some cake, and we invite you, your family, and your friends to please join the board for the next few minutes. We're going to take a little recess so that we can thank you personally. Thank you so much.
Okay, after lovely recess, we are back in order, and we're up to the board president's report. I just want to report that the Governance Committee met, and one of the products of the Governance Committee meeting is on the agenda tonight, number 14.2. We've been looking at the board committee's policy, and there was some discussion that was brought up by Greg Gillette in relation to where the budget resides in terms of a committee responsibility, and the Governance Committee decided, after consideration of several possibilities, to place the tentative budget work under the Governance Committee, which represents each of the other committees. And that would provide an overarching view of all of the individual committee work in education operations and human resources, and bring it back to a committee that's composed of one person from each committee so that we could have the comprehensive discussion. And in looking at that, we also made a minor change to include the words "cross-cutting issues not assigned to other committees," just in case anything like that comes up in addition. So that is on for first reading tonight. If any people have any comment, we could do that under 14, too. And I also wanted to report that I had the pleasure of attending the Hillsborough High School Senior Athletes Award banquet and the senior academic awards. And I just wanted to add to what Dr. Schiff said. It's wonderful to see so many of our kids excelling in sports, academics, and getting involved generally, and it's just really nice to see these award ceremonies, which, you know, capture the essence of their accomplishments. So I just want to say thank you for everybody involved. It was quite an event in each case. So, moving right along, we have not a committee report, but I'd like to ask Dr. Swanson to report on something in relation to the Education Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. So, the Education Committee would have met this morning, except that we had a very short agenda, and we were short on members who could attend. In looking at the calendar for the next few weeks, it was determined that there was no good time to meet, and as such, we're going to put off meeting until July with our one or two agenda items. But what I did want to report out on is that I believe at a previous meeting, I had reported that we would have a report to the community about the random drug testing and as well as the other measures that we put in place with regard to the passive alcohol breathalyzers and things like that. Because the committee could not meet to review the data, that report will not happen in June as we previously promised. It will happen at the July meeting. So I just wanted to know, I know that was of great interest to the community members, so I wanted to let everybody know to watch for it in July. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other reports that anybody would like to give under committee reports? I know we'll do HR and operations at the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay, seeing none. I'll move on to comments from the board and the public. We very much welcome input from the public. There are two times during board meetings that the public is invited to speak. One time is right now that you may speak about any item that is listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes. Towards the end of the meeting, there's another public forum to address any topic. Before you make your comment, please state your name and address. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. New Jersey statutes do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. And with that, are there any public comments or board comments? Amy?
Hi, Amy Salinger, Hillsborough Education Association Chair and teacher at Otten Road. It's ironic because I'm freezing and I'm here in a jacket, but I'm here to talk to you about the air conditioning donation that's on the action agenda. I think it's great that Sunnymead is getting the donation. I believe it's from their home and school, and they did fundraising, and I was just curious, and you might not be able to answer now, the process for that, because several years ago, at Otten, our home and school did the same thing, and they were denied. We were not able to accept the donation, I think because of electrical or something like that. And also, our school was this close to getting air this year, and then that fell through, so my colleagues at work today just asked me to comment on that. We're very happy for our colleagues at Sunnymead, and I am happy for anybody who gets air conditioning in this school district. And just curious, so the process, and if it is something other home and schools could maybe pursue down the road. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, the board actually discussed this in operations, and the Operations Committee looked at the idea of putting in an air conditioning, a few classrooms at a time, versus air conditioning an entire wing or an entire floor of a school as two separate issues. So there was the approval based upon a conversation with our architects that because we were putting it in in a small amount of classrooms, that that was going to be fine. That being said, though, we are having conversations about the strategic plan, which will be part of a larger referendum, and facility upgrades is going to have to be a part of that, and the completion of air conditioning here as well as at the middle school will be a topic of discussion. And that will require rooftop units and the proper ventilation and doing it in a way that not only provides the proper cooling, but does it in a cost-effective way as well.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Valerie Sell, 108 Vandite Court. I'm also a teacher at Hillsborough Elementary School, and I wanted to piggyback on the air conditioning with her. I was wondering about the status of the air conditioning in my wing specifically in Hillsborough Elementary School, the music room, and the library. Every fall and spring, the air conditioning has not worked. This has been an ongoing problem for 12 years now. Last fall, the air conditioning company was there three times to fix it in the fall, and the unit is still not working. As a taxpayer in town, I'm kind of upset about all this money that's been spent for the past 12 years trying to fix our Band-Aid a problem, actually, with things that was not working, and it's still not in a proper condition. The library has experienced the same issues. They are finding some mold on some of the books. This has occurred twice at HES where the library's been closed down, and this process is very costly, as you all know from what took place at the high school in the past. Last Monday, two portable units were brought into the music room and two for the library, which is four times the size of my room, and within a few hours, those units were blowing the circuit breakers. And until today, a week later, someone showed up to- And until today, a week later, someone showed up to correct the problem. So I was wondering how long we were going to go on with this temporary fix, or was there going, is there any kind of plan for a permanent solution?
Mr. Wambuk, do you want to address it?
Sure. So we, I believe that the temporary fix is also going to be alleviated with the rental of a couple of Sunbelt units, which are more powerful. The answer to the question about the larger fix, these are rooftop units. So the board's going to have to look at the cost, and unfortunately for the rooftop units, they're not cheap. So when you say, you know, a Band-Aid approach, I respect that. However, sometimes with the Band-Aid approach, it'll offset a cost of, you know, close to, you know, if you get into the hundreds of thousands of dollars for a rooftop unit. So with the facilities assessment report that the board has, we're going to look at all air conditioning, all deficiencies. But we are working, I did speak to our Buildings and Grounds Director this morning, and the units that you have are actually not that great. So for the rest of the school year, we are getting, we're renting these Sunbelt units that are just specifically designed, these are much better units, much stronger units, so that we can keep those rooms cooled. And then we'll have to approach the board on capital improvements moving forward for the following year. So it is a challenge for us, but we are aware of it. And like I said, we were not happy with the little units that you had, so we are replacing them ASAP. And hopefully, they can at least sustain you through the rest of the year, and then we have to address the next steps. I'm over the limit.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kitty Ward, Hillsborough, no, Sunnymead. Sunnymead School and Secretary of the Hillsborough Education Association and the Health and Safety Chairperson for the HEA. Just to piggyback off of what Val is saying, I have, knowing HES and living in that wing for many years, I do have a concern about the, what was called the literacy office, because there are no windows in that room, and I believe that they do, still do instruction in there, and I know for sure, staff sits in there. And I'm not sure they have proper ventilation, because the ventilation would come from either the heating or the cooling system. And if the heating or the cooling system isn't working, I'm not sure how they're getting any kind of exchange of air. So from a safety standpoint, for both the students and staff, I do have concerns about that. Maybe something has changed since I left, and there is some sort of an exchange, but I do have concerns about that one room, the literacy office in between the music room and room 100. Okay?
Okay. Are there any other comments from the public? Any comments from the board? Okay, we can move into the education agenda. Dr. Schiff.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions in the area of education to approve travel and related expenses, the HIB determination attached list, the affiliation site agreement with the University of Scranton to approve K-2 ELA and Next Generation Science Standard Awesome 2018 Summer Professional Development registrants, as well as a similar activity for grades three and four. Also approve the K-12 NGSS Science Summer Institute, Ume and the PLC Summer Professional Development registrants, and approve the ELL Summer Enrichment Staff. Also approve the 2017-18 RVCC Concurrent Enrollment Stipends as listed, to approve policies for second reading, the varsity letter for interscholastic and extracurricular activities, and the passive breath alcohol sensor device policy. Also to approve change in out-of-district placements and approve an additional out-of-district placement.
Okay. I'll take a motion for the education agenda, items 12-1 through 12-12.
Madam President, I would like to exclude 12-1 from the vote and make it a separate vote, please.
Are there any other exceptions? Okay. So I will, we will proceed with the motion for 12-2 through 12-12.
So moved.
So moved. Second?
Second. Got it. Yes, please. Ms. Boguszewski? Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Abstain.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Dr. Swassong?
Yes.
Mr. Heel?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, I'll take a motion on item 12-1. So moved. Second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Abstain.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Dr. Swassong?
Yes.
Mr. Heel?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
I'll also abstain.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending under the area of Human Resources, to approve resignations as listed, as well as contract changes, revised leaves of absences, and approve a leave of absence, as well as approve transfers and change of assignments for next school year, as well as the appointments for next school year of teachers, long-term subs, speech therapists, school nurses, substance awareness coordinator, and instructional assistants. Also to approve the student teachers as listed, to approve extra period coverage, and to approve the renewal of tenure certificated staff for the coming year, approve the renewal of HEA office personnel for the coming year, approve the renewal of HEA clerical assistance for the coming year, also approve the renewal of lunch aids for the following year, and the renewal of custodial maintenance staff also for the following year, as well as transportation drivers and unaffiliated staff and unaffiliated administrators. Also approve the 2018 Summer Enrichment Program this summer, approve additional 2018 Summer Work, and to approve the extended school year program for 2018.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll take a motion and second for HR, items 13-1 through 13-19, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Chris.
Second.
Lorraine. Any questions or comments on the HR agenda? Roll call.
Thank you. Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Dr. Swassong?
Yes.
Mr. Heel?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm making under the area of operations, to accept the donation from the Sunnymead Home and School Association for $16,800 to be used to air condition, I believe that's five rooms over at Sunnymead. Also to approve the revisions to the bylaw for first reading, board committee structure.
I'll take a motion and second for the operations agenda, items 14-1 and 2.
So moved.
Thank you, Greg.
Second.
Brett? Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Roll call.
Thank you. Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Dr. Swassong?
Yes.
Mr. Heel?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, we have some informational items, followed by our second comments from the public. Are there any other comments from the public? Okay, same rules.
This is my cop store.
No, no, not till you get to the microphone, and then some.
Thank you, Kitty Ward, Sunnymead Elementary School, Hillsborough Education Association. Myself and my fellow educators were disappointed to learn about the many technology programs that are not going to be continued for next year. The list that I, that I know of right now is RAS Kids, which incorporates Learning A-Z, Reading A-Z, Science A-Z, Spelling City, something called No Red Ink, Discovery Education, and Newsella. And I'm concerned for many reasons, and I'm having difficulty understanding why we're sort of painting this with a broad brush, rather than maybe perhaps allowing some subscriptions on a case-by-case basis, or, you know, maybe if everybody doesn't use RAS Kids, teachers that do. And RAS Kids is one of the ones that I'm concerned with. Our teachers have attended tech training to learn how to effectively use these programs. It incorporates leveled books that are leveled to the child's individual reading levels, and the students can read the books, families can read the books, they use these at home. The books, they can also choose to have the books read to them. So with our English language learners and English language families, that is a boost, and that is something that we have really worked with our families on utilizing. Students can record themselves reading the books, and when I was in the classroom, I would use this so that I could listen to their fluency, they could hear their own fluency, I could have their parents listen to it. It tracked how much time they were reading, how many minutes they were reading, either, you know, in school, but really at home, it was, it was used quite a bit. And when we talk about bridging the gap and our different achievement groups, I feel like taking this away is really taking books out of students' homes, at least in some of, some of the schools where we are. Spelling City is another program that many of the teachers use. Again, this is a, a program that they can create differentiated lists within their classrooms very easily. It's, you know, something again is used at home, it's used in the classroom, they're, they're well-used programs. So to hear that the survey, whatever survey there was, said it wasn't being used, I'm not really sure how that panned out. And finally, Discovery Education is a program that my third and fourth grade teachers, again, utilize quite a bit. Does every single teacher use it? No, but there are definitely excellent videos on there that they use. So, and our staff is saying now, why bother to take tech training when that tech training isn't going to be useful because the programs are being taken away? So just wanted to relay that information. Thank you.
If you'd like me to, Dr. Intunis, would you like to make comment about the concerns?
Sure. So we had decisions we had to make for cutting, reducing the budget, and looking at some of the survey items, as Mrs. Ward stated, we surveyed teachers, we also have utilization reports from the companies, and based upon those things, we made some difficult decisions. That's really what it came down to.
Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association, as well as Laurel Drive. I'd like to reiterate some of the concerns that Kitty just expressed, and perhaps address some of the ones that Dr. Intunis just mentioned as well, which is, I understand that difficult decisions had to be made in terms of budgets, and I appreciate that the decision's focused on things and not people. So I'm not here to, to argue that point. And you know that typically I'm not here to argue in favor of technology, because I feel we're rather tech-saturated. So for me to stand here and talk about technology, I hope that that resonates perhaps a little bit. We look at the ones that we have, you know, the eight that were mentioned, I'm sure there's others as well that we haven't found yet, and I understand that this comes down to a budgetary decision. So I looked at, what are the actual costs of this? And what does this actually do for the budget? And these numbers are very, you know, very loose, because I'm not able to determine exactly how much it costs for the district. I would like to know what the savings were for the cutting of these eight programs. So I will be requesting that information. But when I looked at some of the other ones, No Red Ink, Discovery Ed, Newsella, I wasn't able to find the licensing cost for those ones. I did look at Spelling City and noted, while I couldn't find the cost just yet, I did see that licenses could be shared if there were less than 25 children in a classroom. So buying one license doesn't necessarily mean it's only used in one classroom. If we have aggregate classrooms within an elementary class, we can shift those licenses over and actually cover those children. So perhaps it doesn't have to come down to a one license per classroom decision. The other ones, though, RAS Kids, Reading A-Z, Science A-Z, and Writing A-Z, I was able to find licensing costs on those ones. I don't know if they accurately reflect those of the district, but I did look at what it would cost to buy licenses for 30 classrooms or more. And with RAS Kids, it came out to $99.95 per license. Reading A-Z was the same, $99.95 per license. Science A-Z was $89.95 per license, and Writing A-Z was $79.95 per license. So we're not talking about huge numbers in the grand scheme of a budget. We are talking about large numbers once they start building per classroom. But in terms of saving, these are ones that I think have a low cost and a high implementation with our staff. So I would strongly encourage the board to take a look at these and see if the benefit of cutting these ones is actually equal to the money that was saved. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. Are there any further comments?
Christine McAvoy, Mountain V Road. With the exception of Bound Brook, which has a very small population, Hillsborough is the only district in the NJSIAA Skylines Conference for high school sports that does not have a middle school baseball team. From districts with similar population numbers such as Montgomery and Bridgewater, to tiny Hamlets and Hundredan County with less than 400, 400 students, their districts support middle school baseball teams to prepare the boys for adjusting to being a student athlete in high school. Being a student athlete is no easy feat, and boys who only play baseball, having a middle school program would greatly help them figure out how to best time management, schoolwork, and after-school practices before facing the rigors of a high school curriculum. Over the years, I've heard various reasons why we don't have middle school baseball. Time and time again, I've heard it's a money issue. But over the same years, other sports, such as Boys and Girls Lacrosse and Girls Field Hockey, have been added. It's time to have a baseball team if there's funding for other sports. Also, there are now both A and B level teams at the middle school for field hockey, boys' soccer, girls' soccer, boys' basketball, and girls' basketball. If there's funding for two levels for five sports, there should be funding for a baseball team. Finally, since there is a softball team, there ought to be a baseball team as an equity issue. Currently, there is one more girl sport than boy sport. If there is funding for softball, there needs to be funding for baseball. The field size is often given as a reason for not having baseball. Other towns face this issue and find a way to find the transportation to other fields in town. Hillsborough should do the same. Our boys deserve it, and it's time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there any further comments? Public, board? Yes?
It's all business now, because we just passed it for second reading. And I realize we're probably past banquet season and award season and anything else. But now that we've passed the varsity letter policy, did we get that in time to be able to grant varsity letters for students this year?
Yep.
Good, very good. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Unfortunately, I can't take a motion to adjourn, because we have to go back into closed session. So I have to read this motion once again. Whereas Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting, of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required, as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and the State of New Jersey as follows. The matters to be discussed are negotiations/legal matter and personnel matters?
No.
Done? Okay. The matter discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I will take a motion and second.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Just as, before you vote?
Yeah, just a clarification. There, there will be no action taken when the board, when the board adjurs.
Right, that's what I wanted to check. For the audience's sake, we aren't coming back to do anything, so don't hang around.
Yes. We will not be coming back out. So, thank you. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And, okay. Thank you very much.